What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at thirty seven percent ICM. Let's get started. It's your bad or not? Probably not, right?
You're good.
We could be.
I I would never treat this. I think this call.
Hi Jack? Yeah, okay, just call. I could be.
I mean, the RNG was very low, I guess.
Then line off from the corner. I want to.
Close.
I would do it.
Yeah. Oh, punished.
Yeah.
Immediately. And then, yeah, you play all pairs there again, yeah?
Yeah, for sure. Pairs are good, man.
Oh, you don't.
Or you're, yeah, you're gonna be, your twos and threes lose their value in ICM. Pretty fast.
You're no timer. Big blind.
Long combos, huh?
We just saw like buttons, small blind, it calls, but one, like two pips away, big blind cut off. It doesn't call.
Maybe it's because the tree bets really big. So like you start to fold the bottom.
It is big.
The small black. It feels a bit big, you know?
Yeah. No? Yeah. Hmm. That's really bad. Just fold. Hey, so alright, what is the machine gonna say? But it's three, Ken?
I don't care.
Three chips, so cheap. And then you have a suit that ace.
What if it's in space? Seven to eight smart going right here.
I know, but it's just fine. Can you really fold to three more?
This one looks, this one feels like a fold, but like it might be, it might be this calling because it's like one, three more bigs, I guess.
I would fold.
I would fold out, fold. I mean RNG is low as well.
What's, what's the worst two today's that you're opening here?
Oh, my call is zero E V.
Ace, three or four?
I think I've opened, uh, you could, this is nine handed, right? So like assuming it's eight handed. I think that's like ace. Uh, probably still open ace juice suited if it's okay symmetrical, maybe I fold it and open ace three suited. I mean, this is very good, I think.
Part of the problem becomes if you're opening ace two suited and you're folding ace eight suited. Like you just have a really wide range of hands that you're folding.
They can beat.
Yeah, we, yeah, we fold a lot. That's why.
I think Peter, I think like H five and H four might actually be pip somewhere or another here and like A six, A seven, A eight's kinda garbagey, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it seems right.
You're folding fifty percent of range there to that micro three bats of disrespect.
The floor, maybe two.
Just a fold.
You were covered by big blind, uh. Yeah.
Oh, those call more. Yeah, I know.
For you to save me.
Oh, we were opening. I thought there was a razor farmers, never mind. I still fold ace nine off to be honest with me, pig.
Yeah.
So just a call.
Uh, do we jam, uh?
I don't hate it.
It might have some stupid raise six, but like I probably just call, you know? Like, it might have.
What do you do here with the queen ten suited clubs?
Oh, a jam, just jam.
King, jack.
King, jack suited, probably easy jam, I think. Uh, queen ten from hijack, probably it's not so close, but like, I think if it's cut off, I would always like to jam queen ten suited.
You think we have all the like chippy V jams here?
Uh, thirty seven percent, um, field remaining, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the suited, uh, order is jam. This one will not probably.
Maybe a bit more block worry and maybe more suited stuff.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely. Yeah, like queen ten jamming, king ten jamming. Oh, yeah, C ten nine doing stupid, mostly calling and doing some stupid shit.
And then not, not. I was ripping too much here.
Not wow, it doesn't, it doesn't rip king jack and queen jacks with it. I guess it's like.
They're too good. You're not losing much if you jam king jack there. It's like whatever. It's probably making the same money rather call or jam.
Yeah, I think the thing is that it doesn't get anything better to fold, but when we jam king ten and queen ten, we get queen jack the fold, we get king jack the fold.
King jack's getting some ace highs to fold.
Uh, yeah, for sure.
Probably, right? We get better.
The solver really likes to like make like one pip higher fold, like the moment he can do that, it'll just start to like jam a lot, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, it's kinda how his brain works.
Let's put it in his face sometimes.
Yeah, nice.
Oh.
I'll never find that, man.
There we go. There we go.
Uh, okay.
Just a fold.
Uh, this is fold, man, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also aces.
Every time I wanna get creative with offsuit ace, it's always bad.
From the big blind, you can play also aces like that.
Oh, yeah, for sure. That's big blind go from, uh, small blind, you probably can't.
I mean, three betting them at ICM.
Yeah, yeah.
Easy fold.
Oh, okay.
I would fold.
Oh. Probably just to put it in or?
Fold. Uh, fold. Le fold.
I think raise two.
Oh, yeah, I mean, maybe, yeah, oh, yeah. Damn.
Raising.
Raise two, raise two, raise two seems good, yeah.
Yeah.
Nice catch.
Raising to fold, for sure.
I forgot, I forgot you could just raised two. Yeah, we have a race for sure. Yeah, if people give us action, then where's, where there's always folding and having nine bigs left, which is still nice. Because you have to like have some mini raises of aces, right? So we need ace nine off to offset it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, let's fold this.
All right, but maybe it wants to play. No, it doesn't.
No, this is so trash.
King, king.
Yeah. I think queen jack, it might have some calls a little bit, but like queen ten off is, is probably very.
Yeah, yeah. The way I see this though, it's like the shorter you get, the more high cards matter and like.
Yeah, for sure.
And it's just like too big. What?
We were small blind.
Yeah. Oh, even queen jack folds. Sure, yeah, like it has some calls, but like barely anything. And queen ten is like this, one hole, hand category your way.
Ah, this is a tough spot. I think I'm folding.
I'm, I think I'm calling.
I, I would, I would probably call, I think. I wouldn't jam.
Like chippy vids, they're calling, right? But the deeper you get in ICM, the more of a fold it becomes, so I don't.
I don't know, I don't feel like.
I know, but uh, we'll be opening, we'll be opening suited nines from there.
Yeah.
So we gotta call this.
Queen ten, what do you do? You call two?
Queen ten is a call as well, I think.
Yeah.
Queen nine we fold, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're opening suited eights, so we have to call the jack, queen jack.
Yeah, exactly. Cause we fold, we already fold so much, uh, suited eights, right? So we can't just call everything. Gotta defend our range.
Ooh.
Bottom of the range.
Feel like ripping could be a plan sometimes.
I would fold, but.
Yeah, folding is probably good.
Yeah.
Calling is all of the questions, the worst, right?
I wouldn't be surprised if it does, like, some.
Wow, bigs, what are we waiting for?
I just think that he's not opening fives, right? So. Is he even opening fives? So there's no, not much value.
What do you do with sevens? Where do you draw the line basically? Cause.
I think sevens I would probably.
Seven.
Play it on the cutoff, the cutoff, you know?
Yeah.
Like sevens probably, then sixes would be like.
So, okay, this is either the floor or not.
It's close, it's close, it's close, yeah. Let's see. Oh, see, it gets up on the cutoff, from the fuck, from the cutoff, you get to play it.
Yeah, oh wait, if he has fives, he's gonna fold into the jam, I think. Like if fives are the bottom, he's still not gonna play them, I don't think.
It's five, it's four.
What's he call?
Oh, even play fives. Yeah, no, this is a.
That's our range. Yeah.
You know, and we get to play five as well in Germany. It's pretty crazy. Oh shit, what?
Not folding bears.
So he's only opening sixes, yeah, he folds them.
Alright.
Oh, no, he doesn't fold any pairs.
Yeah.
Oh, he did, he just called it off.
Thanks.
Uh, oh. I'm tempted here.
Yeah, I fold.
I'm folding this.
Yeah.
Easy, easy fold, I think. Yeah, 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 knit, knit, knit. Yeah, I, I, I will love. Oh, my god, easy fold, fuck.
How do you get that booty?
So here's why.
Yeah, easy fold. I'm such a knit man.
It's like experiences make me wanna fold this, cause like you call here for five and you still get like often one or two callers, people just like, they were, what are you calling there? Like they all was a goal, like flick a couple.
This one, I think it's because the big blind has very little chips, the button also has very little chips, so it's like kinda trying to scam you. I, like if all them had like covering stacks, I think it would be a fold, you know? The, the, the GTO wizard is very tricky.
That makes sense.
I mean, I, I, I like that logic, but it real, it feels really terrible in small binary jams and you're, and you're now sick and out five blinds. Like, I, I don't think I'm ever calling in the spot. I don't care what the robot says.
I'm with you.
Well.
It's also because it's five, you know, like if it's six, it starts to fold a lot more.
With how short everyone is, you're probably flattening a lot of really strong hands here. Sure, here. The small blind's not gonna have a very wide squeezing range. I think that's kind of unnecessary to overly worry about the small blind squeezing. When their squeezing, squeezing range is going to be so tight already.
I, I, I understand, we kinda talked about this in like the session from yesterday about monsters under the bed, but like he's the only stack that really has us covered. So I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, like in the sense of like, we shouldn't really be afraid of him squeezing.
If he does squeeze.
It's a snap fold, yeah.
But, but he's not going to be squeezing that often to worry about it. Yeah, and it, like if you saw the sim, we were flattening aces, kings, queens, jacks and ace king there, right? Like, good luck squeezing us.
Just a fold here?
Easy fold. He, this is borderline for me.
Could be ready sometimes.
Yeah. I mean, we can never call, right? So we just do the five DB thing, maximum pressure. Or even just fold. Uh. Oh, my god, man. I mean.
It's pretty short. Now it's too high in our range, right?
I think I jam, but like feels, feels kind of.
Not jamming.
Bad as well.
Jamming is pretty sick.
I would probably jam it because I cover him plus he, like, I have good equity.
He should be going all in, right?
So what's the bottom of their jamming rate? Like what's the bottom of their three but not all in range? Like it feels like everything's ahead of king jack.
Yeah, like ace deuce off.
Polar.
But he has a lot of folds, yeah, it's very polar, yeah.
Up and bottom of range, so he has like aces and he has like the bottom as well.
Yeah, but his bottom is only, he doesn't have any bottom, worse kings, right?
He, he's never tribet, yeah, calling it off with queen, queen, basically. He, he only does it with the ace, king suited, ace, queen suited. Um, all the jacks plus tens plus maybe.
Is he not like?
Sometimes he jams nine times.
No.
Yeah.
But if he's even got like ace five off, like we're behind, which I don't think he has, but if he does.
He's folding, he's folding ace five off, it'd be jam.
Right. I just don't think he has enough that. I think everything that calls is ahead of us, and I don't think he folds enough. I'm out.
I'm leaving call.
Yes, I'm leaning.
I lean the jam. My, my vote is jam.
I like the jam, but I don't think.
Yeah, my conviction is low, so.
Oh, my.
Let's go, let's go, come on.
What's, what's this range look like? I don't even know what their range looks like, that's why I asked.
Oh, my god, I'm cutting out.
I think he has a wider three bet. Less than all in range than we considered.
That's, that's solid.
Look at his range.
That's solid. I like that jam a lot.
Let's see if this is real life. Queen nine, queen eight.
I mean, he has some king five there.
Like, nothing is, like, everything that tribets, jacks plus ace, king off, ace, king suited, it's like, always gonna call, right? Like, it's always gonna call, but.
Yeah, that top course is gonna call.
That a lot. We, we have king jack, we block kings, we block ace kings, block ace kings suited, we block jacks. We don't have to be afraid of aces and queens.
You know what you could take out in real life? Queen nine O, queen eight O, king eight O, king five O, somebody's weak aces in real, so if they're not doing that with some of these, it's like you're not getting any folds.
That, that's why I always punt this spot. And like, I always lose. They just always show me queens. They always show me queens. Every time.
It just hits your game, bro. It just hits your game.
Yeah. I always do flop some flush draw and then like I just break.
Actually, I quit, man.
He said aces or queens.
Yeah.
Yeah, just that.
It's one thing to know what they're supposed to be doing, doing, it's another thing to actually know what they're doing. It's way better.
Yeah, but what, right now, we're playing against a solver.
I know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I'm obviously all for changing in game. But right now that we're against a solver, so we need to make the best decision against solver.
Yeah, Joey, Joey and I, like, we kinda, I like, I talked to him about this. We were talking about this yesterday, so like. A lot of the stuff that we're studying and the spots that we're studying is like all in equilibrium, right? And a majority of the tournaments that you play from low stakes to like medium stake or like whatever, a lot of those people are, I. Depending on what site you're playing on, aren't going to be nearly as studied as like the stuff that we're currently going over. So them, if they're studying, then yes, this works against them. However, like, in some of these scenarios, they're gonna be jamming either a lot wider or they're gonna be jamming a lot tighter.
Agreed. I agree. Like people, the moment they learn, they're supposed to tribet like some king five off, some ace deuce off, they do it full frequency, they don't randomize. You know, so if they're one of those guys, like, you need to know like what, uh, is the baseline, so you can, you can like exploit.
I agree with all that a hundred percent, but what I'll say is I study a shit ton, and if I'm in a big blind air with fifteen bigs, I'm not first, and I look at these spots all the time. All that shit I said they don't have, I ain't got either.
Right.
And I stuck where the most people were playing against.
But that's like an ex, population exploit, where you just, you're gonna like not bluff as much because they don't, they're like so much tighter, which is good, because we know that we are supposed to jam these hands, now we don't do it. Because like that's the baseline we're like deviating from, but it's very important to know the baseline, because like then, you know, if you don't know G, like what's GTO, you can't really exploit, right? In that sense, so like, yeah, like we're just learning the baseline and then in game, sometimes it's gonna be a guy who just tribets every single, you know. Well. King deuce off or something, some Brazilian. I have like a few on my table right now. Probably just give me a ton from the big blind with like.
Um, hold on, let's, let's look at this hand.
Yeah.
What do you wanna do, Katsujin?
A fold.
I, I'm pretty sure it's a fold, right?
I'm out of.
It, I think it's close. I'm probably, I'm gonna lean fold, but I think it's closer than.
Snap fold on him.
I would fold, but I, I, I'm not confident because I always misplace this spot.
Uh, point oh seven.
Yeah, we don't wanna take the out of position with king queen O. Cause we open kind of, yeah, we, we open EP, yeah, taxes, so we gotta be respectful.
Yeah, he's check O and king, queen O are that.
You're like queen jack suited here, it's not.
I probably would have stuck around with queen ten suited.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's thirty, thirty seven by ICM, right? Oh, dining.
Oh, yeah.
Is this, is this an ICM spot?
Thirty seven percent.
Thirty seven percent left. So it's not high, but it's starting to build.
It's not the, it's not the stone bubble, right? So.
No, stone bubble seventeen percent.
Okay. Let's raise.
Well, raise this guy. Low jack.
Always.
Yeah.
Always.
Oh, yeah, no, never folding this one.
Yeah, I'm raising that.
Yeah.
Raising, yeah.
I think you're raising even UTG or UTG one, you know, one of those.
That's cool.
I think, I think under the gun, uh, is, is ten nine, right? Not ten eight.
Depends on sex.
It's ten eight if, uh, it's chippy V, so it's probably fold under the gun ICM.
Are we gonna let this guy step on?
Oh, yeah, and I see it maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Let's lose two chips and go home.
My toes have been squished, that's okay.
But we have, we're very deep this one, that's why.
What are you?
On position, no?
What are, what are you considering, bro? Fold the cards, thirty seven.
This one, this one.
What do you do? Bottom of the range, what are you doing?
Bro, it's thirty seven percent ICM blocker oriented.
You wanna call and flop one pair so you can lose our stack?
I mean, I'm.
That's his plan.
Maybe the tournament was pulled off.
That's a, that's a smart plan. I need more people like that on my table.
Oh, man.
Yeah, I would have been here, they were ten nine suited, to be honest.
Wow, yeah, even ten nine, I mean, ten nine suited.
So no suited one gapper here.
How about that ace, jack offsuit? I might have got, uh, I might have been tempted.
Nah, I'm folding that.
I'm telling what? He raised from low jack.
Okay.
I'm, I'm folding ace jack.
Quite a good fold. It is a good fold.
Offsuit.
Five cards suited in position, woo hoo.
A little five?
EG. Jam, here jam.
You think jam, jamming all?
Yeah, I think twenty five and under it's a jam. Louis, if we raise five, what do we do to a jam?
Bold, bold.
Twenty two bigs, ace queen.
I don't know, man. I, I kinda, I kinda like where you guys are going with this. I kinda like five.
Call or you jam?
We're in the hijack, right? I think both are fine.
I like five.
I, I kinda, I'm kinda, yeah, 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 I'm kinda in the five boat.
You cannot raise.
I'm not turbo jamming very much.
I don't like the turbo jam, there's too many people behind.
I think like ace, oh, maybe not.
So look at the table, alright, so the reason I went five instead of jam is the table dynamic is really, really shallow, the average is what, like eighteen or something? So it's just going to raise our risk premium and probably push down our jam frequency.
What do you do with, uh, pocket tens?
I don't know, man.
We had that yesterday.
I think probably some jamming, some jamming and some of, some raise five and, uh, ace, king, I would slam. Probably the off the version is the only one I would wanna slam.
The church.
And then what about? Okay, let's take a train.
Like if I'm considering whether.
It's gonna be like almost no jams.
Um, that means ace queen off is probably not like good to just go all in, so that's like my. We just don't ask myself, like, I don't even wanna go all in ace king.
That's what I was thinking to, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too, Danny. Now, if you move our position to, as it, as we approach the button, I, that jam frequency goes up, I bet.
Wow.
Yeah, I thought. Stack's shorter, but.
Well, yeah, 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 the stack's shorter.
All else held equal, yeah.
I would.
Same rate, different colors.
We are a little bit shorter, so like Danny was saying, that comes into account, but I would imagine even if we had like twenty or something, you would still see jams.
The button is shorter, that's why it's different colors.
Yeah.
Bro, we just said that three times. Wait, 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 is the button shorter here?
Oh, yeah, the button is shorter.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry for calling you out.
Don't do it.
But if like, if average stack was like fifty blinds here, everyone behind us had fifty and we had twenty two.
Whoa, whoa.
Jamming, right?
Let Danny finish talking before you click the buttons, crazy.
No, I was talking about a different hypothetical.
I know, I know you are, but Louis is over here, right? He can't stand it, he wants to, he's ready to click.
Come on, this guy.
So, so all of our knee jerk, our knee jerk reaction was to click call, but. I don't know, man.
I think this is. In the solver land, you call, don't you?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be so sure to call this one, because.
I think solvers.
This is the position is not very good. If this was like hijack cutoff, he's always calling, but.
Yeah, okay, so.
May have some folding.
Get out of here with your Vamo.
I'm going forty percent fold, sixty percent call.
I like that, Nick. I like that, Nick.
I like the, the ratio very.
Not. Yeah.
God, I'm, I'm so good at this.
Wow, what, what, was, was it actually forty percent, sixty percent?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is so sick. Yeah, how do you know?
He's a solver.
He's just that. He's just him.
I offer, uh, coaching for the internet, just saying.
You two can guess frequencies in GTO wizard.
Old.
I call here, man. We're too close. We almost have position.
Gold is ICM, it's ICM thirty seven percent.
Okay.
Talk off the ledge. This may have some, this might have some three betting.
Don't you dare click that button.
I know, no, I don't.
Four and a half.
I don't know.
Danny, it's a queen. If we had like. When we, queen, queen off, maybe. When we, uh.
Alright, bros, back off from the ledge, alright, just put it in the muck already. It's gonna be like, maybe, it might call a little.
Too shallow.
Oh. Back up from the ledge.
Taking a knife to a gunfight.
Shuck. Oh, this is.
We're not folding this.
We're not folding.
Actually, I, I don't.
Maybe, wanna look at range from last hand. What do we do with king jack?
Uh, we may do the stupid, uh.
What, what?
Like the folding or like the, the very toxic.
We're like, we have like no calls. King jack suited all in.
Yeah.
Easy.
King ten, all in. Queen ten fold, queen jack fold.
Uh, some calling, like, like, like five percent.
A little five big blind sometimes against under the gun?
Yeah, that's, that's very nice. Four from five, four from five.
And then, and then five suit that's favorite sizing.
You're all full of shenanigans, every one of you.
Yeah, you wanna go.
They've been coming, they've been coming with the four bets against my clicks lately.
They're learning.
They don't like it.
You wanna go six or you wanna go four here?
Cause I think we're mixing.
Why not call?
Why not call?
I don't like call. I think we're mixing folded, but.
I mean, calling is, is not the worst, but it's also not great. Probably six, six and call, I guess.
There's gonna be some calls in the range in the, in the solver.
I.
I'm with Joey. I'm with Joey. I'm gonna say it's splitting heavily between calls and raises.
If you said call, it's terrible.
Like fifty fifty call raise. I think in chippy V, it's gonna be calling, but I think in ICM, you're just gonna mix fold and three bets.
Maybe not. No, it's more folding, I guess.
Look at that scammy hamburger.
Yeah, it's like a lettuce burger.
Yeah, they didn't give you nothing. I wanna speak to the manager.
It's a grilled cheese, maybe. A grilled cheese with one American single.
Yeah, it's a scam burger. There's no hamburger there.
Okay.
It's an easy one.
It's a call. Finally, something easy. No red. We're too, we're too deep, Matt. Yeah, we're too deep. I'm just calling.
Thing is, I'm a little bit flawed. Back in the days when I was like making bio solver, I learned that the big blind doesn't have pairs there against the button.
That's at forty. Uh, deeper than forty, you're having pairs and then ICM.
Without ICM, right?
Nick is correct, I think.
I'm a little skewed here, yeah.
Yeah, at ICM even at thirty, you'll probably retain some of the worst ones.
You're right in standard conditions, though. If, if it's like a chippy V, like forty sim- simulation, probably just piling.
It just takes it in. Yeah, it piles like twos through fives. Um, actually, a lot of the pairs and three bets. Piles like ace king off, ace clean off.
You know what I do in game?
Those are gone.
What do I do here in game?
We're nine handed too. You're not limping here. Don't tell me you limp here. I'm limping.
Is he, is he saying he's gonna limp?
I'm limping.
Louis, RFI, that's in game.
I don't think it allows you to limp, if I'm not wrong.
There's a good reason for that.
The machine, the machine's not the boss of me, okay?
Alright, alright. Alright, wise guy. I wanna see, okay, you have seven days. A spot where you limp a small pair from EP from twenty big line.
Hey, man, I've been playing a lot of live cash one-two lately. Very easy to do. Very easy.
I mean, I mean, PK was a limp all day, but like, probably not.
Pull your phone out real quick, start recording.
Yeah, when are you gonna start your vlog series?
Galen's gonna turn into next Mariano.
We're, we're still working on his image.
Fold.
Too early, fold.
Okay.
Misery.
Okay.
Fold.
Fold again?
Yeah, the ten-nine.
Fold. Oh, maybe.
Oh.
No, I was like thinking of jamming, but like, uh, apparently it's not, never jams.
I don't, I don't think so.
No.
We don't have jams from the cutoff at twenty.
With ICM, in fact, your jamming rate, your jamming limits and amount of big blinds goes down too.
Yeah, that's typically true.
Alright.
I just thought it was asymmetrical, that's why, but like, it seems like the other guy.
That's a fold, yeah.
What's going on?
What are you doing?
You can't help it.
I love we talked about this.
He's getting scanned by the nine-handed table.
Again.
This one you open, this one you open.
Again, again, I'm gonna do it. Oof.
Yeah.
Oof.
It's the bottom.
Wow, it's like closer than I thought, but okay.
So I've, I've definitely been folding that a lot more often, uh, like recently. I just, yeah, I just, I, cuz I get myself in a lot of trouble when I end up playing with it.
Yeah, it's pretty easy to self-scam with those, right?
I definitely scam. I scam myself a lot harder than I should.
Orange.
Re, rebet seventy-five percent and call twenty-five.
I would call a lot here. Wanna get for the.
Be more wrong, Nick. Oh my god. How do you, what, how do you ever win a tournament?
I thought, I thought it was split two. I thought it was reverse of this.
But it wasn't called a lot because it's suited and like he doesn't wanna get jammed off his equity and it's a total cutoff, right? So.
Well, yeah, you just wanna realize your equity here, don't you? Like with king jack?
I mean.
It changes a little bit as risk premium.
Yeah.
That's, that's what was my thought. I thought on chippy V, it'd be mostly a call, but with ICM, it'd be mostly a three bet.
Yeah, just because the threat.
Like this here too, right? We're just gonna call a ton here.
Yeah, well, no, you could three bet this. You could three bet this.
No, I think.
Suited tens, suited jacks and suited tens usually make up a lot of the, um, bluffing range.
I think this is mostly a call.
Because I, I would tree bet.
Eighty-five percent call.
What, what I'll bluff? King nine suited?
Sixty-fourty, sixty-fourty.
King eight suited, king seven suited.
Oh, yeah, but like.
Geez, I'm, I'm like queen eight here.
Six, six, five.
Thirty percent call.
Queen eight is good as well.
You're a call, yeah.
I mean.
No, it's, yeah, it's gonna be, you're low suited kings, like king five, king six, king seven suited. I think king eight's even too good.
It's too strong to bluff.
It wants aces. Well, look at the offsuit aces. This is reason we don't see any suited, suited kings is because of this offsuit ace shenanigans.
This is the button, man.
Oh my god, yeah, the ICM.
Whoa, offsuit.
We're not space to tree bet that, to tree betting all this.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I've never seen that.
It's a lot. Um, that's, that's more than I'm used to seeing too. That's why you don't see any of these suited kings. It's because it's, uh.
I've never seen this much offsuit, ace tree bet.
The offsuit king.
That is bad as well.
Yeah. Who's tree betting ace three off here?
King jack off pure.
King ten off pure, king jack off pure.
Jack off pure.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense.
So what's the response, by the way? Um, if you look at it real quick, if you three bet, how, how frequently is he piling in you?
Ah, man.
Oh, you're winning.
Just gonna give you the click.
Fifty, still twenty-six combos, twenty, twenty-six combos.
But I mean, you get four bet tw- twenty-five percent of the time. Sometimes it's a jam.
Yeah, kinda.
He's like not calling that often, right? He's folding or four betting.
I think this is why you probably pick so many of these trashy offsuit aces.
They only call the, the very premium calls, which is like the ace ten suited, jack, ace jack suited, king queen suited, and then, uh, one, one other guy. Usually queen jack or.
Well, well, hold on. Is the reason why we're picking the, the aces and, um, from that spot is cuz we have removal? Is that?
Yeah, you're blocking, we block the four bets.
It allows suited aces and suited kings at ICM.
I do have to mention something. King ten suited was, um, zero called and. Or the, the raise was, um, about the same as the call. There was no difference.
Exactly the same. It had zero point zero six percent.
So against, zero point eight.
The same.
Or point zero.
Seven percent.
So against population, you might make more by raising this instead of calling.
Of course. I mean, like, definitely gonna differ, right? Against population, because like population is just gonna be not very aggressive against your two bets.
They're not gonna four bet, yeah.
Right.
You're not gonna four bet, you're like.
They're not gonna find a twenty-five percent four bet.
Yeah, for sure. Like against population, you can just like get away with a lot of, a lot of other line.
Gotta raise that, man.
Raise.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Raise and fold to a three bet.
I'm just gonna do the, um, thing, the whole session.
We are chip leading this tournament. Let's go.
That's a, that's a first for me.
What a.
Oh, wow.
I'm not folding, we're too deep.
He's the other chip leader, just fold.
No, no, no.
Not to call.
Just call, just call.
Call.
It's just call.
Oh.
Oh my god, that's disgusting.
Nine?
You nit. How can you fool nine?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, it's, it'd be a shame to sell. How can you fool nines? You have ninety bigs.
How do you sleep with yourself at night?
We can flop, we can flop a nine in life.
Of money.
Why do these people fucking make money on the site playing like this? I don't understand.
Are you in the micros?
I'm in the, the fucking ten dollar sixty K PKO, dude. It's a shit show.
Go wash your.
The thing, oh.
They're probably not making money. Their graph's probably straight down.
I'm literally scoping him right now. I'm too curious. Okay, he's minus twenty-five K.
Like.
Publicly shame him, Danny.
Oh, come on.
Tell him I offer coaching.
Alright, I, I put how to lose twenty-five K in the chat.
Old.
Friday morning trolls.
Oh, man.
Where do, where do we play? Where do we open this from? That ten-nine off?
Wait, the, can we go back to that?
Cut off, cut off.
Cut off.
Cut off.
What do you wanna see?
It depends.
I just wanted to see where we're actually opening this from.
They cut off a short stack, so cut off.
Cut off and CEV.
Yeah, cut off open.
Button, yeah.
Maybe cut off.
Okay, there. That's what I was looking for.
It's a small person.
Yeah.
Yes, what are we opening?
I'm folding. It's.
Well, hang on, he opens two big blind and we have two, two, so we gotta call.
Up and fold.
No.
What?
It's two big blind, we have two, two.
Bro, this is like the, I watched the last.
You should raise for every situation.
You can hang for like five minutes with ace ten blind versus blind, man.
What is the numeric value for king king?
You should raise the two point two X.
It doesn't matter, cuz king king will always play, but pocket do, so if he makes it two, okay, tell you what.
That's the normal size.
If he made it two point two, we'd have, now it just made it.
Then we would raise him.
What if you have sixes and he makes it six point six?
If you have sixes and you make it six point six and you don't play, then.
He's supposed to open, he's supposed to raise the six point six.
I wanna point out, though, you can't tell me that none of you have ever had that thought in game, when he raises.
Always have it.
Only because of Louis.
I have, I've never had that ever.
Louis is the only reason.
The whole chest. I would never think of that.
Let's raise this.
Um, here, almost pure call.
Oh my god.
No, it's too short.
We're, think of that every time.
We're in position now.
Hey, two point five percent.
It's the same as the.
This is probably gonna be ace jack, ace ten suited call while the higher and lower ones raise.
Yeah.
Two point five percent. I rolled a nine.
Wait, it's, it's indifferent about calling and racing?
The church.
No, it was just calling.
I thought it was same E V.
Well, yeah, sure, but if you look at general strategy between suited jacks and the rest, it's probably just a call. You wanna go polar, right?
I think this is probably just a pure call. Slivers. It was like a crime to call with ace five suited.
Fold.
Yeah, two R to open this.
Fold. Fold.
Uh, this is, oh, never mind, fold.
No, it's off.
Fold.
We didn't really get it mucking.
That's cool. LP wanted to hit the call button so bad there.
Yeah.
Raise.
Absolutely.
Sometimes I can't help myself.
This might four bet.
This is annoying.
It's, oh, I, I'm folding, cuz he.
Mostly, mostly fold with like fifteen percent four bet.
No slivers, just a fold.
His, his range is, his range is too strong.
Did I say fifteen percent? What's that say? Damn.
Oh, wow.
You're a little bit off, Nick.
But we missed twenty-one percent of calls.
We expect, we expect better from you, Nick.
One point three percent off, not good enough.
Not good enough. When was the last time you won a tournament?
I went to the last time I played a tournament.
Ah.
Wait.
Open this.
Uh, wait. Wait.
Oh, twelve. We got twelve.
This is a jam, I think.
Yeah, I'm ripping.
I think this is, I don't think this is ever a jam. This is like a mini, this is a mini race if anything. Uh, I don't think it's fold, it's mini race, mini race. Never jamming.
It's either a raise fold or it's a jam.
I'm, I, I'm.
No one wants to fold.
I'm putting down the.
Actually, I'm on.
I don't wanna fold.
If you're raise folding here, you're jamming with queen nine suited.
Yep, I agree with that. I think we're jamming queen nine suited, queen ten suited. I think this is the raise fold.
Queen nine suited, probably.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I guess I'll twelve, yeah.
You raise fold the floor.
Not queen eight, not queen eight.
Although I don't know what ace eight suited.
Oh, yeah, you're right. What, what?
What's that island?
What am I saying?
It's race calling it off.
Island, boy.
No, no, this is a king six being, being not great. Cuz, uh, luck or.
So wait, what, what were the actual jams there?
Everything.
All the suited nines.
Nine X to the block, ten X to the block, and jack X to the block.
I, I'm a nit.
And on the offsuit, what were the, I didn't even look at the offsuit.
I think a lot, a lot of the stronger, uh, ace six, the ace seven plus, and then ace five off, then you don't wanna jam ace six off. And probably not the ace tree.
Thank you, Louis.
Just wanna mini race fold.
Fold. Ayah.
Oh, I think I fold. Old order, out of fold, man.
Uncle, Uncle Roger, I don't wanna fold. Ayah.
Uncle Roger doesn't wanna fold. We can't go all in, cuz that's a little stupid.
No, dude, dude, this is a fold.
Is this not a raise to five and then call it off?
I think even in chippy V, this is.
I'm with Nick, man, bro. Just get out of the way. What are we doing?
We don't call here.
Careful.
Not fold.
Ace jack is crap against an under the gun open.
I'm calling or tree betting, I ain't calling.
Just think of how tight this guy is, yeah. If, if anything, it's gonna be the stupid five. I would never do that.
Alright, I'm tree betting and calling it off, I'm sorry.
No, with you. Yeah, you're gonna lose something.
It's a bluff, it's a bluff.
Thirteen big blind. Thirteen big blind.
There's twenty big in the pot.
Louis, I want this, uh.
Look at his range. It's gotta be so strong to do this here.
I want this moment to burn in the back of your mind for the next month.
Big blind, man. How, how, how wrong can this be? Ace jack.
Oh, nine, e, point oh nine.
It was folding seventy-five percent of the time, the first time.
It's gonna be like ace queen plus, eights plus, no, nines plus.
Ace queen off might even be a, ace queen off might even be a fold.
You, you might.
No, no, I'm saying the opponent's range. Yeah, yeah.
Look at the fold range, Louis.
Come on, this is a scam. We're supposed to call any.
I think you check the EVs, like, not even.
Can we see villains, right?
Losing pretty badly.
Yeah, let's, let's take a look and see what you're up against.
Nine big lines for a hundred.
We care he opens and then like ace queen plus.
Let's see what Louis talked himself into donating half his stack to.
Oh.
Nines plus and ace queen.
Not a si- where's the bluff? Where's the bluff?
There's no bluff.
Nines are the bluff. Nines, nines and ace queen off are the bluff.
So there are two fake flips in this entire range. Everything else you're like dominated by or?
What if my buddy has like ace ten sometimes?
Then, who?
He'd be making a mistake.
Yeah, if you know he's like a punty, punty guy, makes it better.
And, and it's still better to call against him at the.
Alright, gotta be more respectful of positions, I guess. Okay, okay. Oh my god, what's?
Oh, weird.
Five percent equity.
He was dead, he was dead, so dead. Ace on the flop, he had one out.
Hmm.
Old.
Well.
What's your bottom here?
I think it's ace ten.
Ace ten, ace nine fold, I think.
Ace ten, I think it might, I'm not sure about ace nine. I think ace nine might be in there.
I'm not sure either, my guy.
Um, from hijack, maybe.
Ace eight suited?
Ace eight suited, I can see. Oh, wow, I'm just a nit.
Ace eight is in there.
Ace eight off is calling.
I pr- I probably would have folded ace eight.
Yeah, I think so.
I wouldn't know what to do with ace nine.
From hijack.
I gu- I guess it's because he's just jamming so many, uh, so many broadways, like he's just jamming all the queen jack and.
All the suited nines and stuff that we saw, right?
Nines and stuff, so like this ace eight just does okay against that, like pretty good, you know?
A lot of people aren't finding all those jams, so.
I don't know, man, when people get short, it's easier, I think, to find jams.
From hijack, it does become very scared.
Yeah, but like, depends on the site you're playing.
I feel like people don't blind down often enough, they, they're, they're gonna go with like, uh, something questionable at eight big blind, because they think they have to, no?
They read GG.
Yeah.
More like they're gonna jam like, uh, queen, queen eight suited from twelve, I don't think they jam enough.
Hmm, not from the hijack, I think. I wouldn't wanna jam.
Wait, that queen eight suitor was from cutoff, cutoff, yeah.
Min raise fold, yeah.
Yeah, but also you gotta think, how many people are you playing online that have the shove charts taped to their wall right above their computer?
Everyone.
Off of the bad res?
Yeah.
When you say, when you say shove ranges, are you talking about thirty-seven percent ICM asymmetrical, or?
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
No, no.
Cause that answer is zero.
They, they'll play with flat shove ranges, they get a shove chart online and think it works every time.
Yes.
That's pretty good, the, the simple ones, like the razor H ones are like, probably, you know, there's no ICM or whatever, but like, if you just apply that. Like, not too far off.
I think a lot of people do that.
My wall would look like Pepe Silva.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, if you actually try to post every range that you need, I think you need three rooms.
Yeah, but those are like refined.
A stack of binders.
The basic, the basic ones, like, it's easy to find online, even if it's a free one, and like, you know, it's gonna be a one-two combos off, but like, you know, can't go too wrong if you're this, one-two combos off.
Oh, fifteen, nineteen.
Ooh.
Oh, having a nine is pretty bad, just fold.
He likes to raise?
Okay.
Okay. Muck.
Muckle Pahuja.
Nice fast fold. The last review, it took like five minutes to fold ace ten, uh, to call ace ten blind versus blind. Like that was, that was a long time.
Is this, uh, fold the four bet?
Yeah. Uh.
Tree bet, no. Against a low jack, this is close.
That's probably.
Hmm.
The ICM probably.
This hand is so bad out of position.
I, yeah, I hate that.
Three bird and fold?
I know, early position and easy fold.
Maybe tree bet like.
Three bet twenty-five?
Oh man, they're off. You tree bet more, for the hell?
Tree bet a lot.
Yeah. That makes sense.
That's kinda crazy, I mean, I guess it's against low jack, right, so that kinda has like.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
Do you guys wanna do twenty-five percent now, or near bubble?
Bubble.
This go.
Ooh, boy.
I thought we, you did some twenty-five percent last, uh, last session.
Two tables, three tables.
Fold, fold, fold.
Oh, there's a bubble, yeah, near the bubble.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's a spicy spot.
Oh, do not call that, man.
They need to add some new stuff, they need to do like a two thousand person field, and then do some like, just in the money stuff.
I don't know. They don't have stone bubble, though.
Especially for PKO.
Yeah, but I don't know if.
PK is gonna be so different.
I don't know if they're gonna be able to calculate all of that for a two thousand person field, though, uh, like.
No, they, they get, they definitely can, they definitely can, it's just, it's running a whole nother chart set, takes a lot of time.
That's, okay.
But they definitely can adjust what their inputs are for two thousand man fields.
I mean, I feel like, I feel like their infrastructure crawls in like some, in like smaller fields, that's.
It's too good to tree bet, right?
Uh.
Yeah, but not good enough.
Yeah.
Like, we need some ace five off, and.
Ace five suited, maybe. I'm sure.
Oh, no suited hands.
No, you're, you're in it, you're in a big blind, the suited hands don't get.
So.
I mean, it does, it does use some suited kings and suited A six as well.
I never know when to choose the suited ones in this spot.
It's easy, Danny, it's the big blind.
It's a big blind.
The only one.
Meaning never choose them, because there were slivers all over the place in this one.
Yeah, yeah.
Prefers to flat, the suited. Clear preference, and then clear preference to tree bet this one.
No, Louis, look at the numbers, it has a clear preference to call the, call the suited and to call those, it's just that it raises the suited.
No, I know, I know, but I mean the bluff goes from here to here.
Yeah, but the.
That's what I'm saying.
They're quite, they're worrying about the slivers that they're missing.
Thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, but also, also, in that, because there's more.
They're all slivers anyway, right?
The number of combos that bluff from the suited thing, look to me, oh no, they're way left, I'm an idiot, move on.
Yeah, it was like one.
I'm done, I'm done, there's three times.
But there's more offsuit combos sticking with it, that's the point.
So here, I'm folding. Unmute is on.
Yeah. It's, it's a good observation, that a sliver of ace five off, and a sliver of ace five suited, the ace five off is four times as much.
Which one are we going for, fold or tree bet?
Yes.
I, I'm kinda precautious here, just because big blinds got ten. But yeah, I would orange. Ace six suited is like the combo.
D, and you wanna true bet, it's like aces.
It's gonna be a lot of aces here.
Ooh, nailed it.
All those offsuit aces.
Yeah, look at ace four, ace four, ace four is the nuts.
Again, look at this.
King five, king six.
Ooh.
Wow, king five, king seven.
Under cheap, ace five fold.
Risk premium goes up, near bubble, blockers become more significant. Oh, we're near bubble now, okay, good.
Yeah. Uh, that's a, that's a fold.
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a fold for me, dog.
Danny.
I'm kidding, chill.
Cry, cry call.
Hey man, what do you think he is, what do you think this is, uh, ace jack offsuit or something?
Is that what happened at the cage?
Fold.
Yeah, yeah, Spike called my.
Yeah. Six suited?
Whoa, 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 whoa.
Why, why wanna, whoa, it's near the bubble.
So, uh, we, we have, we have no risk of ruin, we're not gonna bubble.
You wanna show this guy that his, his king is no good?
It's blind versus blind, man, what's, alright, let's play the game, what's the worst, what's the worst offsuit and suited ace you're calling with?
What, what are we doing, why are we not calling?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Cause it's twenty, cause it's twenty blinds. It's on the bubble.
No one wanted to play the game, we just wanna click the buttons.
I knew it was a fold, it's the bubble.
Wait, this is a bubble, oh, okay, oh, yeah, this is the bubble.
You were like, na, 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 chip EV, blind against blind.
Alright, what's the worst one, you're calling, what's the worst one you're calling?
Ace jack, ace ten, right in that range.
Dude, this bubble is still fake, you know?
Ace jack, ace jack.
Ace eight.
It's still fake, you know, because everybody has like fifty blinds in this one, it's totally not, not even true.
There was a good opportunity.
With your ace five.
We're just at a table with all the big stacks, it's okay.
I think we got scammed.
Gosh, darn it, can never hit. Flick a call.
Yeah, I'd call.
Okay, the, the, the big nine, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this reminder is a bubble.
Five, five.
Why you wanna five, five this poor guy with your seven?
Yeah, five, five it, cause it's a bubble.
Your set, your seven doesn't matter, your ace is the boss.
You know why? Because vamos, vamos.
Vamos, vamos.
Vamos, vamos.
He's gonna punish you, he's gonna stuff it with ace deuce.
Damn it.
Cam is playing mind games now.
Very nice.
You're talking to your opponents online, Cap? Jesus.
Oh, it's live.
Oh, live. Never mind. Fuck that.
I expect you to call. Alright.
No, Mr. Bond, I expect you to call.
Jesus, alright. What are you gonna do with that when he says that?
Are you gonna give him a, give him a spicy clicker?
Whoa, where are you going?
Hold on.
What? No.
Where are you going, Louis? Raise that.
We cover.
That.
Time to pressure.
What the hell?
Bubble, baby.
Let's go.
Alright.
Nice fold, nice fold.
Alright, bro, it's just a prank, man. Just a prank.
It's just a prank.
The camera's over there. Don't beat me up.
We're really doing against.
Oh.
Whoa, what?
Oh, everyone's fifteen effective.
Well, no, no, because it's so short. It's so short.
Uh, okay.
Jim.
Yeah, sure. Tried to fool us.
Yeah. Oh.
Hold ace jack.
Okay.
Did he, he folded ace jack suited?
No, no, he jammed.
He called.
Oh, okay.
He called off. Yeah.
Look at our left. Uh.
Um.
Fold.
I mean, probably.
Well, we can call.
Hmm.
It'll mix, I guess, maybe.
This guy's super.
I think on the pure bubble, it will want to.
Mainly fold, right?
Start folding, yeah. Like mostly.
Forty, we're pretty deep here.
It's the bubble.
Yeah, but why? There's no need.
We don't have a, we can't actualize equity on the bubble. As much.
Two's and threes are crap in ICM.
The big blind also has a lot of, yeah.
We're not gonna get paid if we hit.
I would always call, dude. Maybe it's a mistake of my, uh.
The guy's gonna say.
It is a mistake. I mean, okay, it's fine.
Could be, could be, yeah, one of my needs, you know? Do you defend, what pair do you start to defend here?
Uh, five sixes, like probably.
Okay.
Like you're very little raising, even from like. You know, like tens doesn't raise, I think.
Okay.
Like tens or jacks may not even want to treat that because it's a bubble, right?
That's right. That's right. That's what we see here.
We should have an easier time getting to showdown, but on the flip side, we're gonna make less when we hit a set.
Okay.
Look how, look how little eights make there. Like, it's just a bad spot for a pair.
Yeah, we're gonna struggle, basically.
We, we have an easier time getting to showdown because we have a stronger range when we call, that's why. You know, we have all these hands that we don't.
But we're never gonna get paid the value when we.
Yeah.
Is the problem.
I see no mistakes in folding here.
What, what, why do you always wanna fold on a suited ace, man? You don't, you don't get to fold those.
I know. You can jam me for one.
I think I'd raise two.
Always a way.
I don't hate it, Louis.
Look at the EV.
You cannot fold.
You're basically just trying to steal here, like.
Yeah, that's the point. It's like, the bubble, you know? We have a suited ace, we block like all the strong stuff. And then if we get called by big blind, we got so much playability.
You see the zeros in there.
Why is it folding ace six? Stupid solver, man.
That's what I'm telling you, man.
This is so.
It's the worst one.
It's all, it's all worthless.
I'm subscribing.
It's all worthless. And if I play them on the bubble and I hit an ace, who knows what's gonna happen?
Going for broke.
You can also hit a not flash, you know.
Way to know yourself, Louis. I'm proud of, proud of you.
Well, I'm just not here.
Oh.
I, I don't know about that one, chief.
King three!
What? Wasn't he buttoned? King three offsuit? Didn't you see that, right?
Bit out of, you know?
King three offsuit.
Just putting you in the box.
Let's go.
I've never seen that in the chart. He went off the, off script.
No?
I don't know. When, when he shoves from that spot, like, you're kinda in the blender though.
Don't fold, don't fold.
Raised.
This is close. The tea.
This is the bottom, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Missed that seven.
Okay, maybe.
The teeth are the bottom or the top of the folds?
Yeah, man, it's, uh, I'm sorry. It's, it's twenty symmetrical, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's equal, so. You have no advantage.
Fold.
Yeah, it's definitely a fold.
Oh.
I do like the spicy three bet.
Clicky, clicky.
Oh my god, man.
Got a razor.
Do we have to?
This is another zero EV one.
No, no, no.
Fold this, I'll fold this.
And I, on the bubble.
I'll fold this in chip EV. I hate, I hate.
Forty cutoff as sixty.
Yeah, it's not a good spot.
Opening into all these guys who.
Yeah.
Have like, uh, the ace six three bets.
If we were hijack.
If that was suited, would you open?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Of course.
Call.
Three bet.
Just call, man.
Just call.
Why, why are you tripping?
Three bets on the bet here?
Not with this one.
We're big blind.
Ten percent.
Now, this makes a good three bet flop at times.
Ten percent.
Do that in the small blind, not, not big blind. Just close the action.
When, when we, when we three bet this, what's gonna, what?
Eight in there?
I mean, it does do it. It does do it.
Five percent, like, it's not good, right? Five percent's really low. What about king ten off?
I mean.
You guys are, uh, you guys are covered, man. You're just playing with fire.
This is just asking for trouble, yeah. I don't have this. I don't have the heart.
I don't think you need the heart, Danny. You still need to, it's danger, man.
I had a spot yesterday. It's like, but near bubble. It's supposed to, I had ace five suited, button versus cutoff. You're supposed to pure three bet. I had like twenty-one bigs. But the guy covered. I just, I couldn't do it.
Feels, feels like you're playing with egos when you start three betting people near the bubble that cover you. They're gonna think, they're gonna think.
What's this guy doing? He can't do this. I'm all in.
Exactly.
People never, never do that if it's final table bubble. But if it's money bubble, you're gonna get like lots of people.
Oh, I do, I do agree with that a hundred percent. People are.
Final table bubble, everybody's like, okay, you treat me, you, you win, you know? I'm just gonna try to get the final table.
Yeah, you're gonna get ego blasted on the money bubble, though.
Money bubble is like.
That's what I'm worried about.
Fuck are you, man? I'm just gonna call you, and we're both gonna die.
Shoot you in the eyes, all my chips.
You think I care about this fifteen dollars? I call.
Let's go.
Spike call.
Let's go.
Okay, I am on the money bubble. And. Wait, what, what do you do with tens if you end the big play?
Call.
Oh shit, okay.
Depends on stack, stack size.
I just induced. Oh my god, it's a PK, so.
Ha, good luck.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's probably not really much of an induce, in theory.
It's, it's, it's like never an induce, I think.
Louis.
Against UTG. I'm just timing down, man. Just timing down.
You're the daddy.
You have the folks covered. You have all the family covered out here. I don't know.
I mean, I got a good flop.
I don't know about king five or king.
I, I can't find those.
You have ace high at most. He just typed in chat.
I probably missed the king five, king six, but not the king nine.
I.
You literally typed that in chat and then folded?
He typed it the moment I jammed my tens on eight, seven, six.
Amazing.
Oh my god. I just don't know if my AJ is enough. Oh my god.
I wish he would've called, but that's.
Say please fold.
Raise two.
Just, that's too strong of a fold.
No, we're, I'm talking about the tens hand that, uh, our friend is playing.
Okay.
Aircon.
Yeah. It's recording, I think. With Gazebo. Oh my god, he called the ace jack. Are you kidding me? He really called the ace jack. Come on, man, don't do this.
Hold.
Hold the baby.
Hold the baby.
I cover as well.
Really?
Let's go, let's go, let's go, let's go. I stacked him a hundred bucks. Let's go.
Oh my god.
Nice.
Fucking go. The eighty-five.
Probably got a call.
That's a, I, I'm pretty sure that's a call. I don't think you have. Really?
It's the same as we just saw.
Oh.
You guys charged me for it, and now you're all calling.
Ace jack is the bottom. You gotta, you, you fold the bottom.
If we call and lose, we're gonna bubble.
That's true. We'll blind out, right? So.
Yeah.
Same range as last time.
Oh, okay, okay.
Before ace jack, before king queen.
Except ace jack suited is in there now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's only six chips, right, like?
Yeah, I mean, you're only losing two, so I'd rather lose two than go down to six and potentially blind out on the bubble. Interesting.
I was thinking three bet that.
It's good.
You're gonna be in a coin flip. That's what's gonna happen. He's jamming it.
Again, like, too good to, to bluff, right? Just call and. Win a small pot.
Uh, well, we're the daddy here, and we have an ace blocker.
I, yeah, I, this has to have some three bets.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get some three bets here.
I just think there's no need. Like, you're wasting your hand.
Think we need better or worse? Ace five or? Like ace jack?
I think I'm even calling ace queen off.
And then more pull or the bottom then? On that.
Oh, wow. Yeah, no, you're right.
Yeah, ace queen off, pure, pure call, very nice.
Too good here. I don't know about ace queen, though, honestly, but this here.
No, I mean, just call it in. No, no point raising. Don't wanna blow the pot. If it's off to ten.
Ah, it's a fold, right?
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm shitting.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Pretend, pretend.
What? You just opened four today. He's ten suited. You hate, you hate the suited aces, man.
We got them. Actually, one spot over, and that would have been a better open than shove.
From ten?
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Really?
Wait, in the, in the ace ten, what was the strategy? I had to step away.
That was a shove.
Yeah, shoving for ten from, I think.
Yeah, big blind.
No, no, the one where we're big blind versus cutoff.
You're mixing up hands in your hands.
It was a call.
Oh, that's a different one, I think.
It was ace five and worse. Yep. Ace five and worse, and ace queen.
Okay, so we'll figure it out what's to do here. Having a nine and eight is pretty bad against.
I think we will fold. Because we got a nine and an eight. That's not what we want in ICM, I think.
Yeah, nine and eight are pretty bad against.
Yeah. Under especially like the pure bubble, you know?
Can, does he have a lot of R9s?
I don't know if you're familiar with that, but at ICM against EP, it's tens and jacks that are bad.
Oh, really? As in?
Yeah.
As in, in, in.
Under again opens, you have a ten or a jack, the same, it's just bad.
Oh, yeah, you just, you just wanna get rid of it.
And is that because, is that because the bottom of his raising, is that because the bottom of his raising range is off jacks and suited?
Even.
Okay, yeah, makes sense.
Oh, is it because the big blind only has three that you get to open this?
I don't know. I thought it was a clear.
I wanna look at this range.
I thought it was a clear fold, too.
I mean, I would have folded that very easily, but apparently.
We only have one guy covering us.
We're not folding in ace.
We wanna open all ace sixes because of the big blind. That's so cool.
I.
That's funny.
I mean, you're just trying to bully him, right?
Is it not even because of the big blind? Is it because everybody has like a jammer fold stack, and only one guy covers us, and we block a lot of the jams? It's like super blocker.
It's the position, it's the positions, because like, all these guys have like sub twenty or like around twenty, and then the, the big blind's super short. So like, they can't, they can't really mess around, you know? Like, I think they don't really wanna three bet bluff a lot if the big blind's super short, because he will be incentivized to like. Call all in a lot of stuff.
I'm folding that king jack offsuit, by the way, a lot more than I'm opening it.
UTG?
Yeah.
Uh, me too, but like, I recently.
Open.
I'm supposed to open it like all the time, especially when you're short. Uh, like twenty bigs. So, trying to open it more, but I always folded it, UTG.
Raise.
Big blind's short again.
Yeah, big blind's super short.
Oh, it's the same spot.
It's raised.
Ah.
It's wrong.
Why? Two, why? No, no, maybe because.
It was just aces, man.
King five.
Only ones up.
Maybe he doesn't want king five at once, like that thing. No, it's just linear.
Oh.
King nine's the bottom.
Oh, ah.
All aces.
That's one of the most linear ranges I've seen. It's like a perfect arrow.
Uh, hello?
Fold.
It's a fold.
You see a call?
Man, if you call here, you're, you're getting shown ace jack every single time.
Ace ten.
Calling on.
Ace ten call. Maybe, maybe a little bit of ace nine.
In game, I make this call and I always lose. Like, there's no way.
Yeah, it's a fold, but.
This is always a call.
Really?
That would make me feel better, but I never win.
In calling all the ace nines, but I'm.
I'm confident here.
Well, do you think that he's jamming pocket kings and pocket aces there?
Solver call?
I want you to be right.
But I'm folding.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's indifferent.
It's a fold.
It's a box.
Folding game. Definitely just folding game.
Gotta call ace eight.
We're calling ace ten.
I'd rather call fours, for sure.
I'd still fold ace eight there. Cause I don't think in, in game, people aren't shoving as wide as they should be from there.
Yeah, I don't even know if I'm calling ace nine against some people there.
That would be a spot where I do the ten percent of aces.
Then it's a pretty reasonable call.
Offsuit, three bet.
On the button, you get the call of it.
We don't mind wasting the offsuit.
Oh, isn't it?
Yeah. Get rid of it. Oh, interesting. What, what do you guys do?
Fold.
Uh, yeah.
And what do you do about going with ace jack?
Hmm, I'm folding ace. If it's on the bubble, I'm folding ace jack.
Maybe call ace jack?
Yeah, I'm ace queen.
Yeah, that guy with four big blinds. Just a fold. I, I think this one depends on how.
Oh.
Uh, uh, this one is a fold because of one main factor, because he's opening into the hijack who has fifty. If, if you take away the hijack, you actually wanna treat that ace ten a lot, I think. Like, like as a bluff, you know? But because like, if he's like a chip leader.
That's fair.
But if he's opening into the hijack, then, you know, you can't really do that because he's in strong range. So.
Yeah, if hijack had ten.
Yeah, no, like hijack had ten, I, I would just. Make it five, make his life miserable. He's all the suited aces. He's all the like king jack off.
You'd make it five.
No, make it.
Oh.
Wait, didn't we only have like eleven? No, he had sixteen. What do we have?
I, forty.
We, he had twenty-two, we had sixteen, and the ace ten.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm folding.
There's gotta be some raising in this, though, with it, with, with the ace five, specifically the ace five.
I thought it would be more ace five suited to raise with, though.
Uh. It's close to the bubble. I don't think so.
So deep.
Thank you, Scotty.
There is some, yeah.
Yeah, but majority fold. Yeah, because the deck can call.
Pretty sure that's a shove, right?
I mean, if you.
He.
Wow.
He hates that.
You have to respect the bubble.
We have so many better hands, guys. Like ace five is like so down. If you're gonna shove ace five, you're gonna shove.
Whoa. Anyer. Anyer.
Whoa. You guys see there's an open, right?
No, was there an open?
Yeah.
We're gonna cash. Why do you just?
I missed that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, oh, okay. I did not see that there was an open. Sorry. That's.
No wonder you guys were like, oh, all in. I'm like, what?
Joey's the voice of reason here.
Oh my god, man.
I didn't see the open.
Hijack. Close, raise.
Gonna raise here. Whoa, you wanna raise thirty-three and forty?
Two high cards, Peter. It's almost two face cards. It's almost double.
The small blind has forty blinds.
Thirty-three blinds.
Peter, they just won a bubble the tournament, man. They just won a bubble the tournament.
We're not gonna bubble. We're just gonna get three bet and we're gonna fold. We're gonna lose two blinds.
I just wanna put them to the.
Are we opening queen jack?
This guy's getting three bet US any ace.
Probably you get to open it because like.
Can you look, Louis?
They're not gonna have as much. King jack.
Stop.
Jack acts to mess around.
Queen jack?
I think, Louis, in game, I think queen ten off is a fine open.
The flops come in ten, ten, five. You're getting check raised, and we all know what he's gonna show you.
Showing you the other ten to five.
We all know what he's gonna show you.
I, Galen, I actually had that happen yesterday.
Ace ten, all day, yeah.
Okay. That, that actually is like. The way things are.
It's nine, ten, queen jack.
Old king ten.
Yeah, it's a pure full jack.
Queen ten is mixing.
No. Alright, muck it.
Oh, wait, I thought we were blind versus blind for a second.
Yeah, I'm gonna open it first. When I did, I was like, oh, that's easy.
Yep. No way, dude.
I'm sick?
Uh.
A call?
Nooo. This is a four bet, eh? This is micro four bet.
Our seventeen is, is even.
Bubble, you know?
Yeah, maybe it's better.
If it's better.
Why? You guys wanna put chips in?
I mean, it's too good to fold.
Ego, obviously.
Yeah, ego.
Ego. I thought it was a combo.
Is this not a good combo to bluff with, though?
No.
Just call.
Jam. It's a good combo to jam.
No, it's a call.
It, jamming's pretty good as well.
I actually, I, I think it's probably a good bluff combo when the stakes aren't so high.
When you jam and get called, you're never ahead.
How about his king?
Well, obviously, Ken.
Yeah.
That's the definition of a bluff.
All the worst ones. Ace nine now.
You, you still have equity.
Well, sometimes bluffs, you can still get called by worse hands.
That is true.
Pre-flop, pre-flop is like, like, what are bluffs even? Like, everything is just like about the equity when you get called, right? And like, whether or not you block the, the guy's range. So. It's like, there's no real bluffs pre-flop. Everything has.
There's high equity parts of range and low equity parts of range.
And when we three bet. Decide if we're gonna sacrifice that equity against a jam. So like, that's why we don't three bet suited as much in some situations. And as I say that, I got three bet, fuck. It's like the exact same spot. Ace ten, ace ten against a slow entry, but. Let's see.
I would fold ace deuce. I would fold. Yeah, just ace deuce, I guess.
Maybe he's getting a streak up to fifty. Caspi. Fold.
Fold or click?
What?
All in?
No, not just eleven.
This falls.
Oh.
There's no clicking here. Am I wrong?
Uh, they might be.
There's. Aces.
Yeah, lots of clicking. Because you wanna click with aces, right? So you need to find out a thing to click with. To everything.
Oh.
Oh.
Fold or click?
Good? Huh? King eight. Who wins?
Fold.
You open king nine here?
No.
But then it's kinda good as a steal, as well. Let's see. Hijack.
Yeah, king nine, I open.
Hmm, pretty sure it's out.
Yeah. Too many guys have too many chips behind you. Someone's gonna put you in the box. Let's hope I win this.
Okay.
Button's got a pretty big stack since it's a blind, so.
We're pretty deep.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the one guy.
Yep.
Yep.
Ugh.
I hate that.
Uh, can we call?
Oh, right.
Uh, positions.
Yeah, it's a lot of like ace six stuff that we're doing fine against, right?
If we're opening suited nines, we might have to call with the queen jack suited.
This, this might hamburger.
Yeah?
Bull.
Oh. Uh, that pains me.
Bottom bun.
Or is Galen to come in and say, these guys wanna bubble?
I'm just sitting back and observing.
Did you observe that? We called this guy three bet.
Dude, I'm thinking to myself that I'm never calling this, I'm just not doing it.
Never.
Now, I would think the solver probably does it, but on the bubble.
I'd be surprised if you don't take in a call.
Five point five, the point five is like throwing everything off. Only to think the five, and we can.
I'd be really surprised.
If he made a five, you think we can call?
You know what I'm doing with it if it's not, uh, on the money bubble? If it's not on the money bubble, you know what I'm doing with it?
You're gonna jam it, maybe.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it right in his face.
Now, now, too early, yep. Under the gun opened and we're under the gun won.
You never bluff him?
Yeah, and it's equal stack.
Hmm, Joey's right.
It's just because it's equal stack, you know, we can't really. We don't have to initiate.
Behave yourself.
Do we have a?
I.
Oh, he has calls, yeah.
Oh, crap.
Calls, yeah, so stupid.
Jam.
I crumble.
The dumbest thing.
You take your money and you light it up on five.
That's what Joe Rivers doing in those speed races.
Blocker, blocker.
Oh, shocking, yeah, this king.
Well, what, what do you have against all the suited ace, ace six bet? Oh my god, they're so good against like.
Uh. Uh. Okay, I, I wanna raise it to four point three big blinds.
Yeah, the size is too big, right?
No, I think we can still click it a little bit. Yeah, I mean, zero EV.
What's the range look like, just out of curiosity?
Seventeen, man, you don't raise this very much.
Does it make it very, very small? He has to fold all his like queen and.
Okay, okay.
Oh my god, man.
There you go. If it was, now, if you have four point three as a sizing, be lighting that ace five, ace four up.